It's about seven o'clock, so let's get started. Call the special school board meeting to order the old school district. It's Wednesday, July 21st, 2021 at 7:00 a.m. And we're here in the Olds Public Schools conference room, also available by Zoom. Call the meeting to order and we will stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the record, present in the conference room are directors Nagel, Rosendale, Hambach, and Mehl, along with April, April Haring, and Mr. Getz. Robert Thorpe is joining us via Zoom as well as Brandon Beta. The item on our agenda today is to discuss and act on the activities director position. History is that we have for several years, many years, had a part-time activities director in attempting to replace that position. This year, we have had no applicants or serious interest in the position as it has been. And so today, we, and we had a good discussion on this at our retreat on Monday evening. The, the thoughts and presentation by Mr. Getz include reorganizing this position, making it a full-time, 10-month position, proposed starting salary, and a very detailed job description. And that is what we are here to discuss, revise, accomplish today to give direction to our superintendent. Do you have anything you want to start with?
Well, I don't know. I've talked quite a bit on this already, so I don't know if there's anything more to really add to. The big thing, I think, is to make sure that we understand that the position was half-paid before by a teacher's salary and then the A.D. salary on top of that. So when you start looking at that, I think that was a big discussion that we had had at one point, too, is that it, it really, it looks bad because it's, it's moving that to a whole new position. But in essence, it really wasn't as big of a change as what we thought it was before. So I think that's probably the biggest piece to touch base on, so that everybody understands, and especially anybody that's watching at home, they would understand that was a big part of our discussion, too, is that is this a financial sound decision? And I think that's something that was discussed quite heavily, so.
And is not part of the negotiated agreement?
Yes, yeah, that was the other big piece, too.
The other big piece of it, so.
Yeah, not part of the negotiated agreement. So if, if this, at the end of the year, if we reevaluate this and we say, you know what, it didn't feel like we've got any better because of the fact that we went to a full-time position, we can reduce that back down if we need it, or add other job duties to that maybe as well.
And don't have to go through the rift procedure like we would with a regular contracted teacher.
Correct, yeah, because at one meeting we had talked about it and I thought, a lot of times it's part of that in some districts, not all districts, but some districts. And it was thankful April was here to help clarify that. It is not part of the, the negotiation agreement, so. Which with being now a full-time position, that should not ever get put back in. As a part-time position, it could have been added to.
And this job description we have in front of us has not changed since our board retreat, correct?
Correct, no, I have not added anything. No, I did not. There was some stuff I kind of, I was thinking about and I was like, no, it's, it's there, it's clear. But definitely, if you guys feel like there's something that you want to continue to add to this, that's why it's here to be one last time to look at again. And after looking at it and thinking about it is if there was something else that, you know what, I'd like to see this in there, that's exactly, or clarified something a little bit more, we definitely can do that.
And we had the part-time A.D., say Sherry, for instance, we reduced her classroom lower by one class. Is that what we did? Does anybody remember?
Hi, Brandon, do you remember?
When we, when Sherry came in as A.D., she was taking over that part-time position that Wally was having, if I remember correctly. And we just fitted A.D. into that schedule. So we've always had part-time science position, I guess, with some of those classes that we couldn't cover before.
So, so she, you know, being an upper-level teacher, had, she taught maybe three, maybe four classes? Not four, she never taught four, I don't think, but three and not, you know, not because they're upper-level, probably not 20 or 30-day students in them and, and most of them were all of them. And what did she teach? Did she have four classes this past year, Brandon?
So when Sherry was A.D., she taught two sections of chemistry and one section of physics. She only taught three classes. Last year, we added applied chemistry as an extra class, so she was at four.
So a full teaching load, well, and it depends on your class. If you have eight periods, six periods, seven periods, they have to have a prep in there, too. So if, if you're a seven-period day, three periods would be half-time roughly, because you add one for the prep.
Sure.
And that's how you get four periods.
I'm trying to think, so about?
About halftime.
About half of her salary was basically A.D. and?
Correct.
Half of her teacher's salary.
Teacher's salary, yes.
So that's another 20,000, so 31,000.
For her, 20 plus, with her experience, well, probably 20.
So we're almost at the full time that we're discussing at this point.
Correct.
And, and therefore, when it, when it moved from Sherry, part-time teacher, part-time A.D. with that, you know, allocating 12,000 plus 25 maybe?
Right.
And then moving that whole A.D. position to a part-time 11 and a half thousand.
We got a really good deal last year.
And as I said, and with all, all A.D.s, I kept saying, you know, there's stuff that just isn't getting done. But I couldn't, certainly could not expect Mr. Hack to have done more than he was already doing for, for his compensation. And, you know, I, it's, as we fleshed this out, to me, it's become more and more clear that this is a bigger job than what it was, than what we were really acknowledging in last school year. And frankly, last school year was a mess in so many ways, and this job was very, very, but extra difficult. And so.
But, you know, on paper, it looked like the A.D.'s position was only 11,500.
Sure.
But it certainly wasn't, you know, when you look at the class load and they were still receiving full salary.
And that, that wasn't only when Sherry was here, because other teachers prior to that also have lower, a little bit reduced teaching loads, but maybe not to that extent.
Right.
So.
Well, and April also pointed out that Mr. Hack was also paid above and beyond that.
Yeah.
Yes, if he had out of contract.
And also mentioned that overtime, which falls on, on our administrative assistants in doing support for that work, which some certain, some supports and collaboration will certainly be helpful and continue, but maybe to a lower, lesser degree.
She shouldn't be able to do it without going into overtime. She was going into overtime suddenly.
I had April pull some overtime figures for me on Carrie. And, you know, last year, most of her overtime, I'm guessing it was COVID-related, and making all those phone calls and whatever. But, you know, 2019, 20, that would have been state volleyball, right? You know, almost $6,000 in just base salary in overtime. Year before was 3,000, year before that was 3,500. So, you know, maybe you got those costs, too.
That was just base salary? That wasn't the overtime salary?
No, that was, that was, well, that was the overtime salary. Without any taxes or anything, so I should have seen.
You're good, I just was trying to understand what you're saying.
Yeah. A good discussion. So what, what I'm seeking today, and we can continue to have discussion, what I'm seeking for clarity and guidance for our superintendent is a motion to approve reorganizing the A.D. position from a part-time position to a 10-month position with a starting base pay. And I'll, the number that we discussed the other night is 46,944 and 40 cents.
Yeah, that's what it came up on the sheet, that's what it was.
And benefits according to 10-month licensed personnel contracts. It just says 10-month contracts. So, well, it doesn't, either way, is the same?
Yep, right now it's the same because of the, we changed the classifieds, that's the single policy.
Okay.
So they're basically the same. So, and then the retirement just depends on what licensure, I mean, if they have a teaching.
And then this was an additional comment, which may or may not be needed in the motion, but it, it would still be assumed that if, if they're working outside the 216 contracted days, that they may be compensated with additional hourly pay as would be appropriate. But I, I, I would entertain a motion to, of that motion or something similar, and we can continue to discuss.
I would make the motion, whatever you say.
Okay. Nagel moves to approve reorganizing the A.D. position from part-time to a 10-month position with a starting base pay of 46,944 dollars and 40 cents, with benefits according to a 10-month contract. Would you like to add the, the additional if they work outside, or is that, that's pretty standard within our?
I just, so that way I was clarifying.
Okay, so.
And I, the reason I added that was June and July, there is a possibility that there's schedule changes or whatever, and I just wanted to make sure that there was some protection in that person. If we're pulling them in on June and July and we're requiring them to work, not just if they come in and volunteer work, you know, or, you know, hey, we're having this meeting, we would like to see you there. If you don't show up, that's not required, you know, that kind of.
Okay, so my question is, we're listing this as the starting base pay. Are you viewing this then as, well, if you got, if you had applicants with five or eight years of A.D. experience, that you would, you would, you would increase the pay based on your experience?
Yep, and I was looking at it as the same, and I know April and I have kind of talked, we would keep it the same. It's the teacher's year of experience would be the same thing. We would just add it, but it's strictly A.D. experience. It's not teaching in the classroom experience, it's A.D. experience. And I'm not, again, as if somebody comes in and says, well, I got this many years of coaching experience. Sorry, this is A.D., this is a whole different job. Just so I'm clarifying that to everybody and where I was seeing it.
And we also discussed that coaching, along with this, should not be a problem. So they can be an A.D. and a coach, so that's still on the table.
So potentially, a head coach, potentially an assistant, potentially the strength and conditioning coach coordinator position that is new to us, which would make a nice, bigger salary and job, but some of those may fit just fine with this position. All right, any other discussion? Robert, you've been quiet. Have anything to ask or add?
Um, yeah, I guess I'm here. I, and we, we had a lot of discussion about this. There's, it's just, it's a lot of more administration away from the teaching. So they're just, I'm going to have a hard time with it.
Anyone else?
Well, you brought a different one.
So as far as the substitute teaching side of it, is there a certain number of hours you have in mind for this? Or is this just as needed?
At this point, I've left it as needed, and that would be something that we could always look at in the future to, to address. I think there's always a need for substitute teaching. There's days where we cannot find anybody, so that's where, I don't want to say that we're requiring them to do this substitute teaching, and then all of a sudden we got them in the classroom and they're canceling a game or an event, and now he's worried, or he or she is worried about all the A.D. stuff that they're supposed to be doing and we're forgetting about the kids, which usually has happened in the past anyways. So that's, that's where I want to make sure that my administration, they're available. At the same time, be conscious of that, and I think both of the administration is in the same page as it is. It's great we have somebody we can call on as, as needed, but at the same time, being conscious of possibility of game being canceled or event being canceled.
Right, well, yeah, I'm just saying, just so there's a clear expectation, just so if it's not, it's not, shouldn't say required, but if it's not encouraged, then if it's on a volunteer basis, the person may not volunteer.
Correct.
They may not do it at all if they're not asked.
It's part of their description, and if they decide not to do that, or I might, I might expect that my administration staff would come to me and say, you know what, I've asked this person to do this. Then at that point, I would address that, and if they continue to do that, it's grounds for business.
Just so the expectation is.
Yeah, yes. I'm, I'm expecting them to be in the classroom a, a number of times, I'm sure, throughout the year. Especially if it's a slow time for the activities director, I would hope that they're calling the activities director before they would call somebody outside. That, that's my expectation as well.
I can, I can see it as a, this stepping in for, for example, a, a header of assistant football coach, when they know they have to leave at 2:00 on Friday for that two-hour-a-way game. Well, you know, you're, this is the go-to person, because we know that well in advance and, and could be well-prepared to be an excellent sub for Mr. Miller, whichever coach that they would be stepping in.
Yeah, most definitely, yeah, that's 100% where they would be used for sure. But I, I also want to make sure that we're using them. I, my concern is that if I put a set number of days in here, and then all of a sudden, now we're cutting their time short where they should be doing these other things and they're not getting the job done, well, now it's going to look bad on their job reflection, because we're forcing them to go somewhere else and they're not able to pick a job. So this first year, I was kind of keeping it open, you know, more so for that. At the same time, we can hopefully add more to it as we need to throughout the year. And I think both administration would agree that they, they understand that they're going to be having to somebody in-house that they can house-spend to if they need to, as in other persons, with reason.
And we're, and we're doing all activities, correct, including elementary activities?
Correct.
Which elementary is considered fifth and sixth grade?
Fifth and sixth grade, yeah. Because previously that wasn't in the description, and that was a free area that got dropped.
Yep, yep, so anything that's in-house, in the, in the district, that is district-run, if it's basketball or whatever, I don't, I don't know those quite well enough, because it's, like I say, we're on day 21 now, so.
But who's Tom?
No, I just know that, and so until the end of July, I need to know. After July, you won't hear me say it. But it, it, yes, that's, there's some things that, if you notice, the, the duty list, the essential duty list is growing substantially compared to what it was before.
Right.
Yes, obviously, can be reevaluated each year.
Absolutely, just same as any job description, always can be reevaluated.
Other questions or comments?
And just so you guys are aware, you're the, if you approve the motion, if that passes, then you would go back and approve this change next. So it's two different motions, just your order. Did I clarify that, or did you put them together?
No, that, we haven't. In fact, I was going to ask you if that, because I, I don't recall that in the past we have just routinely approved job descriptions, other than maybe the superintendent's job description. In fact, I, I'm, I'm not sure that anybody had a job description before Josh Johnson was here in my first, my second, third, and fourth years on the board. And he, he pulled all that together, I think, out of me and Tom. And so I, if, if this, if that's your desire, but then, then I, we'll, we'll, I'll request approval. But, you know, then, then you're stuck with this, right? Or you've got, do you have, you know, the, the all-encompassing and anything else that you're asked to do? Or?
Hey, he's covered. They're going to be stuck with it. Cooking lunch?
But with any job description, you know, you, you have to prioritize and, you know, you're setting goals and you, you, you. Yes, this is your responsibility, but, you know, five of these things are where we really need help right now. And, you know, you, you just aren't going to be able to do every single thing every day. But, but you, you set goal, you'll, you will set goals and prioritize what, what the, what the expectations are.
Correct.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is the approval, oh, wait, did we get a second?
No.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yes, I was waiting.
Okay, so the motion now is officially on the floor. We've had a good discussion to reorganize the A.D. position from part-time to a 10-month position with a starting base pay of 46,944 and 40 cents, with benefits according to a 10-month contract. Our, our, our understanding is that, like any position, extra duties outside of their contracted time would be compensated accordingly. And, and board members, you know, while we rarely have a split vote on this board since I've been on the board, it's okay to have a split vote. And just remember, we were having very good discussion. There are, there are positives, there are negatives. And, and if you vote against this and it passes, or vice versa, you know, we, we have to stand behind the decision of the board and support it. We don't go out and say, well, you know, those other dumb board members or those darn administrators, you know? This is what the board decides, and it's okay. And, and the great thing about this is that it fits within our budget, and it's easily reversible within a year or changeable, should we decide it's not working the way we had hoped, or the way Mr. Getz is envisioning for us. So is there any other discussion? Hearing none. April, will you please call the roll?
Vila?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Robert?
Uh, no.
The motion passes four to one. All right, with that, Mr. Getz has asked if we would then act upon this job description that he has before us. We can add, we can delete, we can change what we have before us. And as, as already mentioned, it does say other duties as assigned, so anything is on the table. So everyone has a copy of this in front of them, I believe, and it's up on the screen. So is there a motion to approve this? Well, why don't we discuss, first of all, I, I'm expecting to have a motion to approve. Before we do that, can we discuss any changes that any board member would like? And that would, then we would avoid having to have those messy amendments and things.
To be honest with you, if you've never approved them in the past, that's your choice. I've just seen it both ways, and that's why I didn't know where you guys did this.
You know, we may have approved those, and I think.
Personally, I like it approved by the board.
Then, I remember if we did the personalized learning portion, we approved that one. You approved the position, but that we didn't approve.
Usually the administration would put something together, and then the board would just give kind of like an approval. I've seen it where they actually do a motion to approve it, and I've also seen where they, okay, I like this, you're great, go ahead. Yeah. Yeah, more or less. In essence, it's seeking, is there anything that you guys are seeing that you would like to, you know, hey, this doesn't look right? Or I'd like to see this added, or as Ryan said earlier, maybe we do want to put in there a certain number of days. That's a personal choice that you guys may want to do that. I'm just concerned, like I said, that's the only reason why I did not do that, simply we don't know where we're standing this first year, an exploratory year.
Well, I'm comfortable if we approve it, if that's what you're comfortable with. I'm also comfortable with using, you using administrative discretion. But whatever you and the board.
Whatever the board wants.
Whatever the board wants.
I'm fine with it.
Without, without an official approval, or do you want to have?
No, I'm, I'm fine with the description, the way that it is.
Okay.
And leave it up to the administration.
Okay. Does, does anyone have any items that they think should be added to this job description? And the, the minutes can show that we, we've discussed and reviewed and give our blessing, even without an official approval, if that's the way we want to go. Robert, anything you would like to add?
Yeah, two questions. One, we had talked about, you know, Wednesdays, just for, I mean, the expectation of at least 30, 30-some days of subbing a year. And then also, how would the hours, you just divide the salary by a 40-hour week? How do you come up with the additional contracted pay? Just to, to know where we're at with that.
April, can you comment? We, I think we have a standard extra hourly pay that is, and $25 an hour is our typical out-of-contract hourly pay.
Okay.
So for example, of morning gym, morning open gym, coaches in the weight room, those kinds of things have been in the past.
$25 an hour, yeah.
Does that clarify things, Robert?
Yeah, there, I, I guess I didn't hear it. Did you say something on the subbing? We were talking about once a week before as a minimum.
Right, and that's, I'm leaving that to the administration so they can figure out what day is best for them. I don't want to start putting handcuffs on and saying, you got to do it this day, or you got to do it that day. I, I'm just saying that I think we, there's going to be a minimum, if you wanted to say a minimum of 30 days a year, I could add that to it as well, but that's up to you guys as a board, right?
Okay, and then as far as the, the fundraising side, too, then, any expectations there and you're thinking of? Is that still in there?
Yep, there, there should be fundraising in there. I, I took the highlight, highlight piece out, but it's more so set, it's the third one from the bottom there under essential duties, maintain fundraising and sponsoring sponsorships to aid in the cause of the Ops activities, athletic programs, and venues.
Okay, I guess, I guess I would just like to see a little bit of emphasis on that, you know, and that you can pass that through, you know, when you're doing your interviews and.
Correct.
For the fundraising, so?
Yep.
It's actually up on the submarine responsibilities.
It's there, too. I just wanted to, I put it down below to say that this is essential, it's something that we are really making sure that we're, we're touching base on.
Right, and again, there's back to the expectation of the person applying, they realize that you're, this is an expectation. It's not just on here for, for the fun of it. It's, it's an expectation that you have to do this.
And it, it's something that may not be thought of by some that are applying for this position, because it is new to us in our community, and it, it's, it's not a good fit for just anybody. Not everybody is a good, is well-suited to, to go out and raise money, and some people are very good.
Yeah, and, and the other piece is hopefully somebody that, and when they see that, they're going to say, oh, well, that means I'm going to have to be creative as well. It can't be just me coming up with ideas. I can definitely throw ideas out there, but they need to be coming up with ideas as well. April, if she would have ideas, or any of you guys would have ideas, I, I would hope that this person understands they need to be open to those possibilities. They, they know they are going to have to go out and, if we ever decide to, I know at one point there was talk of expanding the football field down by where the track was. If, if that's something that we decide to move forward with, I would expect this person to be leading that charge of trying to get those additional funds. That's their job, he's responsible for those facilities, that's, that's why it's highlighted and bulleted in here.
You know, one thing I just thought of that I'm not sure is highlighted on here, and maybe others would. You know, one thing I just thought of that I'm not sure is highlighted on here, and maybe others would not think it's inappropriate. But but fan behavior and and environment, I I don't know. The environment, the facilities actually are are listed in here, but not, you know, what what's the feel? What's, what does it feel like in our gyms? Are we, you know, are we positive supporters of our of our teams and and good welcoming guests, hosts to our our visiting fans and referees? Do we show good team spirit? And sometimes that's lacking in in our, I have felt over the years that we have lacked. There are times when it's been real good and other times not so much.
And I could add to that too, Sonia. Yeah, we want to be welcoming, we want to be all of that too, but also the other thing too is, are we putting, what's the idea of the of the game? I mean, you're playing the game, but there's a reason we create score too, and that's to win.
Yep, and and I think that's kind of under that administrative responsibilities, like that you're talking about. As far as the the coaching and that that drive to win, that's part of the reason where we're hopefully going to this full time is that over time, they can continue to, activities director is to also give guidance to anybody that's a coach or advisor. They they should help grow those positions as well. It doesn't mean that's gonna happen overnight. I mean, if somebody's struggling or if they have, we have to also understand the the athletes that are coming in too are gonna be different, or somebody that's going out to do the speech, they may, I mean, I swear to you, if I signed up for speech right now, I would not be the best person to be able to go out and give that speech if there's a big crowd. I have stage fright, so I would be something I would have to overcome. But hopefully you would see progress in those, and that's something that they're gonna have to set up individual reviews of each coach or an advisor. So that would definitely be a part of that as well.
All right, so we I'm not hearing any specific changes to be made other than, do you want, do we want something specific about number of days of of subbing or expectations there?
That's up to you guys. I think, and you can ask the administrators, it looks, sounds like, it looks like they're both on. Maybe if you wanted to ask them if they're, what their thoughts of this expectation. But I I think that you'll hit that no matter what, but it probably be more so of an expectation of the two principles, making sure that they understand they have thirty days.
And and when we, if we were to say thirty days, would we mean thirty seven hour days? Or would we mean, I mean, as as we discussed, I can see this as a as a natural fit for stepping in for an hour or two from time to time as the need arises. Well, is that a day? Well, it's not a day, but on thirty different days, they'll easily get that.
Correct.
But will, would they get in, in that manner, say, two hundred and ten hours of teaching?
And and that's why I'm kind of a little bit nervous to start putting a number to it because golf season's coming up, and we're gonna have two different golf seasons, one in the spring and one in the fall now. And I know golf is one that goes.
Yeah, that's an all day.
Come springtime, there's a lot of track meets that they're leaving by ten o'clock in the morning sometimes. There's at least some experience with that, or noon. So now you get a half day, so if we do a half day plus we're requiring them on a Wednesday, now they got an hour, a day and a half, and they do that two times a week, so now we actually have two days that week. It starts to add up, that's why I'm concerned about putting that number of days in there.
And then what if, what if the A D is also an assistant track coach and is among the, you know, they're they're leaving with the junior high team or, you know, then they're not available to sub either.
Exactly, that's, that's a lot back too.
So. I would be okay with just leaving it open with the idea that, you know, from time to time, would you report how many hours that this position has has subbed? And on what occasions are they being used? And just see how it goes in your one?
That could also be included in the monthly school board report.
Yeah, definitely.
Does that seem reasonable, Robert?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Okay, any other?
My thoughts are we just need to trust the administration and not micromanage it. We know they know their needs and they know they're they're available, so.
They do, and then we don't because this is new. But trust, trust their judgment and that they're doing the best they can and we will make adjustments.
And then at the end of this year, at the end of it, we can go back and have that.
All right, any other discussion about the job description? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the description, and I don't think we've made any changes.
That's where I'm reading it to you.
Correct. All right, is there a motion to approve the A D job description as presented? Heimbuck moves to approve, is there a second? Nagel, seconds, any discussion? Any further discussion? I hear none, so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Robert says aye as well, those opposed say no. Motion passes. Any other comments? We have no additional items, it's a special meeting, we can't add anything. So thank you, board members, for your good discussion and respectful conversation. We trust our administration will implement this to the best of its ability.
I I will add too that if you're getting questions from the public, please understand, my job is to manage this district and and as a superintendent, be in of that manager type role. So send those people back to me, and if you're getting challenging questions, hesitate, don't hesitate to come talk to me and we can have the discussion about it. I'm always open to this discussion with anybody out there. That's how we continue to make this even a better program, is that those ongoing discussions and if there's concerns. If you're hearing concerns to why we added the position, that's different, but if you're hearing concerns to the individuals' process or the the A D doesn't seem like they're doing this, or they're not doing that, those most definitely send back to me because that now, if there has to come down to where you guys are discharged, you guys are the the judge and jury. Don't get me wrong, this and that will employ, so it should never get to that point, but I just want to protect you that you don't have to recuse yourself in that type of situation, not just this, but any type of position. Send that back to me, it might be, let me hear that so I can go and make those corrections. Now, if it's about me, then make sure they're sending it to Sonia. You get the tough ones.
She likes it.
All right, that is the end of our agenda, so thank you again. And our meeting is adjourned at seven thirty six. No more meetings until August tenth.